Good morning, everyone. Today is March 22nd, 2018. It's the last of nine. Welcome, everyone that's here with us today. And I hereby call this meeting to order. Clerk Talbot.
Chairman Fendbrum.
Present.
Vice Chair Gagis.
He's going to be back on after the presentation.
Okay. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Before the third one, please stand. Prior to the pledge, I would just like to ask people, there's a person that's pretty well-known in our community that is in a really bad way right now. Mr. Senor Cortez. He attends a lot of our meetings and we all hear from him from time to time. And he's in a really bad way. And I ask prayers for him. And then, just additional prayers for the people, the many people in our county. Commissioner O'Donnell put it to that. That are suffering because of the drug situation. And not just in our community, but nationwide. There's a lot of significant issues coming on this. We just have, we have just a little silent time to think. Prayers to Mr. Cortez's family and to all those suffering in our county and the nation with the drug situation that is happening. Thank you. Sheriff Hope, would you lead us in the pledge?
My honor. I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as one.
Thank you. Commissioners, next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda. Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Yeah, I have a motion in the second to approve the agenda. Clerk Talbot.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Yes. Chairman Fendbrum.
Yes. Next item is our citizens' concerns. This is the title we offer to our citizens that are here today to brief the commissions on something that's either in the agenda they can't say for later or is just something they wish to bring to our attention. First, we ask that we keep these comments on this compliance meeting. First, I'd like to recognize Dr. Gina Perez-Barron. She wants to talk a little bit about what we just had our little side of this. Thank you, doctor, for being here today.
All right. Thank you, commissioners, for allowing me to address you today. As you know, I'm Dr. Gina Perez-Barron, founder of Alka-Yl integrated medicine, which is the medical area of triarchy and also the medical director for triarchy and community services. I've developed a novel approach to treating opioid addiction that provides a surveillance medication-assisted therapy hand-to-hand with intensive behavioral health. Drawing on multiple best practices, this model is effectively being used both here in Taos as well as Rio and Reba County. In February, Reba County put out an RFP for substance use treatment. I'm here today to tell you why no one, including myself, has applied for these funds. This RFP is outdated. It offers funds for detox and addiction treatment for indigent patients for direct services. A detox is an antiquated model. Research has repeatedly shown that it doesn't work. With the advent of Obamacare, indigent patients are virtually nonexistent. And those that wouldn't qualify in today's day and age simply don't seek care. And direct services are reimbursed or paid poorly by insurance at this time. What we need in Taos County to effectively respond to this crisis are funds that, one, build capacity and support programs expanding access. Two, strengthen and support some of its practices like dialectical behavioral treatment and contingency management. Three, allow us to train and pay for unreimbursed services like community care support workers. Four, support infrastructure expansion and facilities. Five, help us recruit qualified medical and behavioral health and support staff. Six, allow grant-writing resources to allow us to extend our financial support beyond our small town. These are the critical services that we need. Right now, I am here one day a week providing those services in this kind of model. It's a group-based model. I can treat 12 to 15 patients at a time at the best practices level. All right. We have the support of law enforcement because of our intensive surveillance. One of the goals is to make sure that diversion is not an issue and to not just be addressing the symptoms of withdrawal, but to use that care as a means to actually get that addiction treatment, which is really with those intensive, specific behavioral health services. And what we need, because this is a crisis area, I specifically, we're at Brown Zero. We've been going through this longer than any other place in the nation, is we really need that additional support in order to really put this approach to care that works in a rural setting, it works with our people, and to be able to take it to the next level. In one day, I run five, I run four groups. I can see up to 15 patients in those groups. If I had the opportunity to teach what I do, you guys can imagine the expansion that we'd be capable of. I need your support. I can't do this alone. And I'm starting to get tired. So, thank you. Thank you so much for your attention. I welcome the meeting so we can talk about this further. And thank you so much for your unique support.
And commissioners, we are currently under the RFP process. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do want to thank you, doctors, for giving that input. As the chairman mentioned, we're still within the RFP process. We have to be careful about talking about it until that closes, but I really appreciate the input. And we will take those recommendations. All right. The future of our RFPs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the audience wishing to address our full-time sheriff and full-time citizen?
Yes, sir. Thank you, chairman and commissioners. Just a few quick things in the public forum here. First and foremost, I hope everybody had the opportunity to read my editorial that was printed in the Taos News. It is my views on making our communities safer, particularly about handbombs. I speak about the controversial topic of arming teachers with handguns and put my thoughts about what we, as a community, could be doing. Last time I spoke to the commission about a resolution, Commissioner Mark Gallegos and I have since had a sidebar conversation about that, and we will be continuing forward. Whether we go forward in form of resolution or just simply public comments so that people know where we stand is yet to be determined exactly what should happen and what would be the best cause of action. I certainly don't want to bring something forward to this commission and expose ourselves to great controversy like we recently just saw in Las Cruces. However, I do believe that our community is united in that they want a safer community. They want criminals held accountable. And they want less violence and threats in our schools. I certainly support every aspect of that. A couple other just short announcements. We will be having the Shady Sheriffs Benefit Fundraiser coming up on April 21st. That's a Saturday. We're going to do that in conjunction with the basketball tournament and fundraiser for our community Special Olympics. I've got Mr. Flendorf, and we'll be pursuing that. We have other events and things. I'm hoping that we'll be able to serve free hot-hog lunch that day as well. I've had some giveaways. I'm excited about this. I want to support our youth and athletes, especially now that the athletes have united and it's the Penasco, Taos, and Questa athletes that will be receiving the benefits from this. It's to help pay for their travel expenses to Albuquerque, to the state tournaments, and very worthy and good cause. I'm excited to be a part of that. And finally, I would remind us that today, as I speak, is the Straight Hearts Radio Fund. It's one of their annual fundraisers to raise money for our shelter, our community shelter. And I apologize, when I committed to going on the air at 10 o'clock today, I didn't realize there would be a commission meeting on a Thursday. So, I'll be leaving here shortly to complete my part in support of Straight Hearts. Thank you.
And Commissioner O'Donnell will be there later today? What time, noon? Five. Okay. Five o'clock.
And anyone can call in, write a donation. Call in and challenge your fellow commissioners or your fellow legislators.
She does. She's not.
She's not. I'll be doing the same for our public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the commission today? Well, thank you for your comments, Dr. Perez-Barron and sheriff. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the February 20th, 2018 regular commission meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the minutes of February 20th?
20th?
Yes.
I'll second Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I have a motion to second to approve the February 20th, 2018 regular commission meeting minutes. Clerk Talbot.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Yes. Chairman Fendbrum.
Yes. Next item is item eight, presentations. The first one will be a presentation for discussion only regarding the Taos Fuel's inter-agency restoration approved T-Fire charter. It's being presented by Mr. Ben Thomas of Rocky Mountain Youth Corps and Laura McCarthy of TNC.
Thank you, chairman. Thank you for being there this far. Commissioners, thank you so much for your time. My name is Ben Thomas. I'm the executive director of Rocky Mountain Youth Corps. And I'm here to introduce a T-Fire internship program. This program enhances opportunities for young adults and veterans to gain job skills and fuels reduction and firework. Our goal is to engage multiple partners to allow for this work to happen, this work and the experience to happen across multiple boundaries. The goals of this program are simple. There's an inherent need to increase fuels treatment and restoration activities in the force around our communities, around our county, and in our woo areas. We have a goal to increase agency and local contractor capacity to continue this work far past a temporary internship opportunity. Our goal is to create a strong career path for young adults in our county as well as veterans in our county to engage in this type of work. And finally, utilize existing agreements and partnerships to streamline this operation, to minimize duplication, and ultimately to increase administrative efficiencies. I want to give you a big, brief background of this program. In the fall of 2017, Rocky Mountain Youth Corps was awarded a grant through the Nature Conservancy to run a pilot program. In addition to that grant, the Forest Service received funding to hire two veterans. So, in total, there were four T-Fire interns that operated last fall. They had an amazing experience. And I'm going to let Noah, who's an alumni of the program here today, explain his experience in that program. Moving forward, in 2018, Rocky Mountain Youth Corps has secured two additional grants, one through the Rio Grande Water Fund and one through the Forest Service to hire our next cadre of interns. We're looking at operationalizing six interns for the program year of 2018 to work across boundaries on forest and fuels restoration. The benefits of this program should be evident to both the community of Taos County and its residents. We will recruit and train young adults and veterans from Taos County. Many of these interns are alumni of Rocky Mountain Youth Corps Conservation Program or veterans throughout the county. We plan to partner with Not Forgotten Outreach to reach out to those veterans. Our goals are simple. Like I said, we want to protect forested land as well as woo areas that have a huge impact on the residents of this county. And then ultimately to increase the capacity of not just the county, but agencies and contractors to continue this work by providing trained young adults to enter this field. I'd now like to introduce Chris Latte, who is going to speak briefly from his experience working in this program. So, Chris, please.
Hey, Chris. What are you saying? Yeah, I could attest to this program. The Taos County's and also the collaboration that we have here. People come from around and come to our CWPP meetings. And what they see here is very strong collaboration. And so, what Ben's offering here is just a really great thing. Also, working on a couple fire crews and finning crews, the cohesion that this program creates is going to be fantastic all across the lines. That's all. Just a quick something to say. I'd like to introduce Noah, the alumni.
Good morning. How are you? I'm good. How are you? Good. Thanks for being here. Yeah. So, yeah, again, my name is Noah Tonry. And first off, to start with my experience with the Youth Corps. My first season ever with the Youth Corps, I was just on a finning crew and never worked in the forest, never ran a chainsaw in the monad. And within the first week, I fell in love and I knew that this was my passion, just working out in the forest, doing something. So, after the first season, it was only a day crew, and I wanted a more full experience working, you know, not only every day, but also staying out in the forest, staying away from home, getting that experience. So, I applied for a spike crew. Got an assistant supervisor position, which I really enjoyed. I was able to not only work, but also teach others and kind of be, you know, kind of a supervisor, helping with that stuff. And so, with the spike season this last summer, I got some really good experience, some really good trainings. I got my S-212 chainsaw so I can, I guess, legally work running a chainsaw in any forest or any contractor, anyone. Got comfortable working long hours in the heat, got used to working side-by-side with like seven other guys just out there, no one else. You know, get used to that brotherhood. You have your fights, you have your good times and your bad times. Get used to going through all that. And yeah, again, also that away-from-home experience, just not only being out there, but like not coming home, not having really cell service or internet. You're out there, not coming home for anything. So, then, at the end of that, we were offered an internship with fire. And I was always intrigued by fire. And I was really loving just working in the forest. So, I was like, oh, you know, this would be a good experience to get my foot in the door, see if I liked it, see how it goes, and see if I want to continue with this path. So, I applied. I got that internship. We got some really good trainings. I got my red card, so a lot of online trainings as well as hands-on trainings with the Forest Service to get red carded so I can be deployed out on fires, which I was within the first two days. I would say, hey, me working, I got deployed out to California on engine. So, I got really good experience going out there, being away from home, working with, you know, four or five other guys I'd never met before, getting used to that kind of brotherhood, learning kind of engine works, running it, and all that stuff. And we're deployed out to not a big fire, but what's called severity fires. So, you go out to somewhere where the fires are really kind of popping up like five a day or something. So, that was a really good experience, I think. And just called out from me patrolling, saying, hey, we got a fire. We need you to come, you know, put it out, basically. So, you get there, you see the fires, it starts growing. You get to work, put it out all day. And then by the end, you get to see it die down and have to mop it up and check on it. And you come the next day to make sure everything's all good and call it out. So, that was a really good experience. Got to see how well the fire works, like I said, see it from growing to all the way out. And yeah. Yeah. So, what we did in Forest Service along with all that is we prepped burn sites, so we burned areas to prevent fire from moving through there. And we also prepped them for future burns. So, we thin, we built line, we basically cleared out all that stuff to make sure it was nice and good. Worked with other agencies. We worked with this EVA a couple days off them and get rid of some of their fuels. We worked with the Taos Pueblo guys, which at the end of those two days burning with them, I was offered a job with them for this coming season. And yeah, got it deployed out to fires, worked many small fires, helped with other parts of the Forest Service, and not only just fire. But say, we had a day we were working, there's not much for us to do because it's kind of the end of fire season. We would go help other parts of the Forest Service and kind of experience what they did and help them do their work. Yeah. The future of it for me, I gained really good experience with many good people. Like I said, I was offered a job at Taos Pueblo, which I'm following through for this coming season. And I basically have the job, just got to do some paperwork, basically. But I have that job, which is really good for me. It's what I love to do. So, having that internship really helped me pretty much get a job in the career I wanted right away. Yeah. And also, piqued my interest not only in wildland fires, but with structured fires, working like, say, in town. I was interested in what they do, just working any kind of fire that, you know, kind of hazardous, always on top of your toes, hard work, long hours. So, it piqued my interest for all that kind of stuff. And for the future of others, you know, other people get this internship. It gives them really good experience, shows them how real fire is. So, you know, being away from home for two, three weeks and even longer gets them, you know, right up on the fire, just right there, get them to see exactly how it is. And yeah, get a really good sense for it. So, all in all, it goes through a really good experience and got me a career going. So, thank you, guys. And now, I'm going to introduce Laura. It's a very rewarding career. Yeah. Recommended highly. Yeah. Thank you. All right. Thank you, commissioners.
My name is Laura McCarthy, and I will, I can sign the closer on this one. And you have in front of you the charter, and it's also in her packets. And Noah really laid out super clearly why it's important to create this transition vehicle for youth from the Rocky Mountain Youth Corps and other starter programs into actual jobs, living wage jobs. And the purpose of the charter is to get all of the organizations that are participating, that have jobs to offer, together with the organizations that are helping to create the programs and to, in a non-binding way and in an agreement that is not a financial instrument, but is really a statement of intent, get all of the pieces and parts aligned so that through the charter, we can make that commitment to working together so that the program can succeed. And, you know, a couple of principles here. There's no one organization that can fund the T-Fire internships. There is no one agency that can give youth all of the experience that they would need to make good decisions about where, which kind of job to take, but also to develop mentorship or to be mentored by various people from different agencies. And there's also turnover within agencies that could threaten, like if we don't have a charter that unifies us and gets us all on the same page, then we could get a year or two into this and have turnover in one of the key funding agencies, for example, and lose a lot of ground. So, it enables us to have some consistency. So far, this charter that you're looking at has been signed by the Rocky Mountain Youth Corps and by my organization, the Nature Conservancy. And we know that it is on the desks of and being considered by the Forest Service, I mean, I would say more than considered by. For them, it's just a matter of getting the agreement signed. Also, Taos Pueblo and Town of Taos. And we see the county as being extremely important because you are the conveners of the Taos County CWPP or Community Wildfire Protection Plan core team, which convenes four times a year in this room and is all of these parties getting together and sharing information and planning work for the future. So, we're pretty confident that when, you know, assuming, Chairman and commissioners, that you opt to sign this, that once you sign, others will fall right behind you. I think that's it. So, if you have questions for any of us.
Commissioner? Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for the young gentleman's comments. It would be nice, as this is a precursor to, for instance, going to the New Mexico Forest and Watershed Restoration Institute, which is at Highlands. And so, it would be great to encourage these youth to go on to get their degrees so they can hold government jobs in the forest industry business or for you to start your own business as a forest thinner. So, I think it's a good start. I'd like to see if you can sign on as signatories Los Trumpus, Santa Barbara land grants because they're actively looking for funds. They want to do forest thinning in their area. So, if we could maybe see if they might be interested in signing on. Thank you.
That's a terrific idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's put this on the agenda for the next meeting. And I think, I don't know why we wouldn't support this if no one's going to approve it by the words. Moving on to agenda for the next meeting.
On behalf of all of us, thank you very much.
All right. Anything else, Chris?
Mr. Chairman, something just occurred to me. Have you all thought of starting the youth bill program as it used to exist in Taos County?
Chairman Fendbrum, Commissioner Romero, thank you for bringing that up. It's something that's come out in internal conversations at the recommend Youth Corps. I think that would be a major step for Rocky Mountain Youth Corps. It's something that we would need to add a lot of discussions around before we implement that. But as recommend Youth Corps, we're looking to continue to diversify our programming, not just forest restoration work, our school-based program, our prevention program. But we see a need for that level of training. So, it's something that we've talked about internally, but I think we're still far from actually submitting that petition.
Give it some deep thought. It's definitely a very successful program. We have it here in Taos County. A lot of those young people now, they're in their thirties. Often, they've called in, they're like, they're doing this and that, they've been successful. So, it was a very good program.
Yeah. I agree. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Chris. All right. We really appreciate it. And I look forward to signing on to this next meeting and we'll get approved, and then we'll give it time. Thank you.
Much success.
Okay. Next item is item B, presentation of Taos County's financial audit for the period ending June 30th, 2017. Be presented by Mr. Steven Montoya, audit consulting senior deputy. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Great. Great. Good to be here. Thank you, commissioners, for allowing me to speak today. Yeah. My name's Steven Montoya with R A D W. And I'm here today to provide a brief overview of the results of our audit for Taos County's financial statements in which we went over in detail the audit results, including our audit objectives, corrected entries, significant accounting pronouncements, estimates, significant estimates, any internal control matters and compliance matters. The financial statements for the county were then submitted to the State Auditor's office on December 1st of 2017, in compliance with the deadline established by the State Auditor. The State Auditor then performed their review and then released the financial statements on February 19th of 2018. So our audit consists primarily of three phases, that's kind of how I'd like to kind of discuss it today, and we issue a report on each of those phases. Phase one of our procedures is the audit of the financial statements. So in this phase of the, of the audit, we're auditing the numbers and the notes to the financial statements. So that's these guys over here, and as you can see, they're, they're pretty large financials. But really, we're auditing these to make sure that they're materially correct, so the disclosures are accurate and the amounts. And in our audit, we, this year we issued a non-modified or clean opinion on the financial statements of the county, which is the highest level of assurance that an intermittent accountant can provide. And so that was good for the county. And then the second phase of our audit relates to the internal controls over the financial reporting. And so in this part of our audit, we're, we're assessing the internal controls of the county and we're primarily focused on the, on the controls over financial reporting. So we're not, you know, doing an internal audit to where we're looking at cash receipts and, you know, doing a specific policies and procedures. Although we do look at those, we're evaluating it to see if there's any risks that some of the amounts or disclosures of these report, in this report, could be misstated. And so we evaluate that at the beginning of the audit and then based on that, if we find any type of control matters that indicates a risk, then we increase our audit procedures to address those risks. So it's, so with that, you know, we have to issue a report on internal controls. And there are three levels of deficiencies that we can report in the audit, that we're required to report. So the lowest level is a control deficiency, the middle level being a significant deficiency, and then the highest level is a material weakness. So during our audit, we determined that the county first resolved all of its prior audit findings. So last year, there was one material weakness finding for the prior year's audit and two significant deficiencies. And those were resolved in, in our, we found that those were resolved in this year's audit. In 2017, though, we did report two new internal control deficiencies, one that was reported as a material weakness related to accounts receivable cutoff, and the other was a significant deficiency related to the trial balance and financial statement preparation. One thing I want to just make sure that it's important to say is that both of these internal control matters were related to the year-end financial reporting. And so the county, and it gets a little technical, but the, the county operates on a cash basis of accounting. And you know, handling cash receipts, all that and treasury, I mean, there was, we didn't find any issues with that. And so controls over operations, day-to-day operations, I mean, we, we had no issues. It was really, you know, taking it from the cash basis of accounting to the full accrual basis of accounting, which is what needs to be in these financials, that required some additional efforts and it required some, some journal entries. And so that's why we had those control deficiencies reported. But I, I do have to say that management is definitely very cooperative throughout the whole process and it was actually, I think, really good this year as far as just that communication and really getting, really getting a full understanding of all these hurdles and tolls. And so anyway, I think there was a lot of pluses to be gained from this year's audit. So the third part of our audit is the compliance audit. So it's a compliance with the state audit rule. And so we come as part of this audit, we perform procedures that are outlined by the New Mexico Office of the State Auditor. And in our audit, you know, I'm happy to report, we did not detect any compliance findings this year. And so the county had no findings related to this year's audit. And we also noted that the previous compliance finding that the county had for travel per diem, that that was resolved by the county. So it's great to see that those matters are getting resolved, actually all matters reported in previous years' audit were resolved. So, you know, that's, that's a summary, a real brief summary of the audit. We, I want to especially thank, you know, the county for serving, for allowing us to serve the Taos County. And I'd like to also thank the county staff, because I know it's a lot of efforts that goes into this audit, especially Lupe, Jonathan, Paula, and Mary Ann, who were very helpful throughout this audit and addressed the issues as we, as we brought them up. So it's a pleasure to work with you guys and at this time, just like to take any questions that you may have.
Just a comment, isn't it true that the, the items that you spoke on, the, the booking of things that led to the material, you're confident that our staff has already made amends and, and fixed that pretty much basically overnight? I mean, they, they?
Yes, so those are all resolved and the, all the amounts in here are materially correct. So the management took care of all of them. You know, it was one of those things where we came out, started testing it, looked to see that some things needed to be corrected rather than the management, and the management knew right away what those issues were and they needed, they had some, some schedules and they were able to address the matters. And we kind of look at it from that angle, is that, you know, when we first come into the audit, we didn't get, you know, really, you don't want to have too many journal entries. And so if you start getting into where there's several entries or the large entries or entries to prior year, you know, that's where we start kind of evaluating whether that means to get reported to, to the governing body. But yeah, absolutely, management had, had resolved all these issues.
And the other comment I saw in the, in the exit meeting is, is our treasurer and our finance director took this as a learning tool and, and they, the way that they, they went through this particular audit and everything, I commend them.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just say, wow, I'm amazed, I'm honored, I'm really proud, my officials, Lupe, Jonathan, our manager, everybody that's involved in this process, thank you very much. Does, does that mean that they get something from them, they see as far as a reward or a reward is concerned?
Mr. Chairman, if we show it off, who knows?
Because he did promise that a few years ago.
We're inching closer every year, as I mentioned, these two findings, we are very confident will be resolved in this year's audit as we go forward. Just a little background audit, if I may, Chairman, Commissioners, we use accounting software that's really cash basis. We don't have the ability to make those adjustments, as mentioned, within the current triatic software we use. So in the past, we had to take an extra step with software outside of ours. We use, it's called P F A, P F X Engagement, it's basically a software the auditors use. And so this year, we tried to do it without that and it didn't work out the same way because we weren't able to move from the cash basis to the modified to the full accrual. And so we understand very well how those moves work. Our modifieds are basically all of our year-end accruals. So if we owe people money for payroll, we have to book that. Assets that are out there, we have to book that and those are the things that we're well aware of, we just weren't able to make those adjustments because we didn't have that software. So I'm very confident that going forward, we're going to get past those findings as well. And I think, as the chairman mentioned, the best part about it is the treasurer and finance departments really came together and they're working very well and moving forward. This wasn't looked at as a negative, it was looked at as an opportunity to continue to grow for the county and I think we're all getting better. So that I appreciate and I thank both offices for their hard work and coming together. We also understand the importance of meeting with our audit committee more often and Ms. Martinez is going to take the lead on bringing together our audit committee more often so that we're meeting throughout the year, not just a couple times when the audit starts again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Have a great day. Okay. Item C is a presentation by R C Capital Markets, Mr. Eric Herring, their managing director. Thanks for being here this morning.
Great to be here. Good morning. Do you all have the presentation in front of you or, okay, I brought extra copies just in case. Okay, sure, great. So what I mean, Chairman, members of the commission, manager, so what we're here to talk about today is the refunding of the county's 2011 bonds that were originally issued in 2008, refinanced in 2011, and also some new money was added to it. The call date, however, stayed the same on June 1st, 2018, which is coming up. So there's a couple of things that I wanted to kind of walk you through and sort of opportunities that the, that the county has to not only refund, but also restructure the pledge to give the county a future flexibility to borrow for additional funds in the future without restricting the use of those funds. The 2011 bonds were pledged with the capital, the county capitalizing grocery seats tax, the county infrastructure grocery seats tax, the county correctional grocery seats tax, and then the county equalization distribution. What's important to note there is that because the county correctional grocery seats taxes is pledged, if any additional debt was issued for this total combined pledge, it would be restricted to the uses in the correctional grocery seats tax statute, which is, which is pretty restrictive. Because of the restructuring, you can actually, the county can actually free up one of those increments in grocery seats tax debt, the infrastructure grocery seats tax debt, which has a pretty broad pledge to it, which would allow the county, if it showed, so desire, to be able to issue additional debt and really broaden the use of those funds. So on, if I could turn your attention to page seven, what, what we would be looking at is the refunding would generate about $2,796,000 in present value savings, or 10.4% of the par amount being refunded, just for, 3% is considered the threshold to be economically beneficial, so it far exceeds that. When the 2011 bonds were, were originally funded, it did have a bond-funded debt service reserve fund that was equal to the par amount of the bonds, 10% of the par amount of the bonds. And effectively what that is, is that that fund sits, sits there to the life of the bonds and is used in the event that there is a shortfall, that reserve fund can be drawn upon. When we took a look at this, at the financing, we felt that the county would benefit from replacing that bond-funded reserve requirement with a surety reserve. And effectively what it is, is that it's a, it's an insurance product that allows a third-party insurer to basically hold or provide to the county that reserve requirement. So effectively what it does is allows the county to reduce its borrowing by taking that debt service reserve fund of about $1.4 million, reduce the refunding, the cost to the county is about $40,000 for that, for that insurance premium, but that will save the county because you're having to borrow for that reserve fund over the entire life of the, of the borrowing and it wouldn't be available until the end. So effectively what that does is that the refunding by releasing that reserve fund and contributing it as a source of funds to pay down the 2011 bonds and the refunding will generate about $280,000 a year in annual debt service savings roughly. And so in conjunction with that, as I mentioned, by removing the infrastructure grocery seats tax, the county has additional available funds a year to be able to, to use to make debt service payments without increasing your existing debt service payments as they currently are today. If I could, turn your attention to page, this is page nine, this is what the 2011 bonds currently look like, the principal, the interest in the total debt service, it's about $2,700,000 a year and in 2034, it dropped to about $1,500,000. And these are all the various pledges that the county has for this debt. By going to the next page on page, on page 10, this would be the proposed financing, sorry. This would be the proposed financing, due to the refinancing of the 2011 loan, the debts, the annual debt service would drop to $1,813,000 and then in 2034, it would drop to $1,281,000. The debt service coverage would be roughly the same as it currently is today at one and a half times. And then for purposes of, of, of just providing a, an idea of what a $1.8 million borrowing would look like, that would be about $120,000 a year, $127,000 a year annual debt service for a 20-year borrowing. If you pledge the infrastructure grocery seats tax to that borrowing, you would, you would have significant coverage on, on that pledge and you, and the county would still be saving about $100,000 over and above what it's currently paying right now. So from a timing standpoint, my, my colleagues are at the New Mexico Finance Authority board meeting this morning to, to cover this, with the Finance Authority Board, they're, they're considering this approval, we don't anticipate any issue with that approval, assuming that you approve it, we would come back in the April timeframe with the actual terms and conditions of the refunding. And right now, we're just contemplating the refunding, the refunding, the new money borrowing is just an example of what the county could be able to do. And again, this provides, with that flexibility, should it so desire. And with that, I will pause and see if there's any, any questions that you all have for me.
Commissioner?
Thank you, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. So basically, we are refinancing a loan at a lower interest rate, is that correct?
That is correct. So the, the interest rate on the 2011 bonds is a little over 4%. The rate on the new bonds is right around 3%, so you say about 100 basis points.
And is that tied in with the bond rating of the state of New Mexico, did that go back up to AAA, is that related at all?
That's a great question. So the New Mexico Finance Authority rating is separate than the state. They are, I believe that they are AAA by S and P and AA1 by Thudis, could be reversed, could be AAA by Thudis and AA plus by S and P. But this does not, this, the state's rating, which was downgraded about a year and a half ago, roughly in November of 2016, doesn't impact this finance. The state's rating has not been changed, it still is AA1 with a negative outlook. But the Finance Authority program is, is set apart from the state's rating.
And then, Mr. Chairman, on the first page, where you list, I guess our capacity for GRTs and going to number seven, I see a 1, 3, 5, and 7, and I, I think we had imposed three of the 1As. I would like you to look at to see if there's any way we can get out of imposing, putting that money or a portion of that, you know, from 911 into a medical, because we need help in funding our substance abuse issues. So I, I don't know if that's possible and I don't, I thought it was three, so I don't understand the 1, 3, 5, 7 here, but if there's any way you could help us if the commission were to agree to, I, I know we have three, 1As, I don't know if there's a fourth, but if there's any way we could repurpose a portion of that to our... I don't know if there's a fourth, but if there's any way we could repurpose a portion of that to our substance abuse issues.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Really, we're more governed by the JKA for the 911 dispatch that we've put together on how that money would be able to be used. So it would require us, I think, going to the JKA and asking if that would be something that they would all agree to. Right now, the funding has basically given us the ability to meet the goals that were within the JKA for reserve amounts, stacking levels, and the things of that stuff. So we are right on track with the money we're getting specific to the operations of the dispatch. The fourth increment is something we could consider. It would have to back out to the voters, and we let the voters decide how they would want to implement that and how that could be used. It's also an allowable use for some of this money to be used for our EMS department. And that would be a great relief on some of the constraints they have on salaries. We have the 222, which is our higher exercise fund available to operations, but not for salaries. And that's always where we come up a little short, is in salaries. So I appreciate where you're coming from, but I think it is something we take to the voters to see if they would approve that use and the extra taxable authority for the county.
And so that 1, 3, 5, 7, that refers to the fourth one that has not been implemented, is that correct?
I believe those are just footnotes underneath here that kind of explain more of what that would.
Oh, okay.
So the footnotes on that basically say it's a county-wide taxable gross receipts. County-wide versus county area basically means we can impose it into the municipalities as well as all the rest of the county. Three is the ability to impose on January, July. So that's just saying when it could go into effect. Five mentions that it requires an election, so we do have to take it to the voters. And seven imposed prior to '04, whole harness revenue subject to reduction in equal increments. So that's just a note specific to whole harness. If we, to implement those, we would start losing the distribution we receive.
All right, well, thank you. So we are imposing the full 3As on number seven with the ability to impose another 1A if we wanted to on medical. Is that what you mean? Okay, thank you.
That's not an additional potential revenue, is roughly the estimate of 1A. So that's the estimate of what that last A to bring. I believe there's no revenue yet in the light item because they haven't been collected. So we're kind of in that transition year where we don't have final numbers for what we've been collecting. We've only collected, well, at the end of fiscal year, it'll be 10 out of the 12 months that we were collecting because they went into effect July 1st.
The tax that in the landfill board meeting, which has turned into the recycling redundancy board, is that the, what's listed as number 11, that was pledged that would be available for recycling if it was ever released?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, right now, number 11, the county environmental services GRT is already implemented. We use it within our solid waste department. It's pledged for some debt. We, a few years back, bought two roll-off trucks and a pickup truck for that department. So I believe that's pledged until 2020, or 2021, I can't remember the exact date on that. But that's what we've been using that for. The excess beyond the pledge goes into the budget for solid waste.
Anything else, Commissioners?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Harrigan, of course, our treasurer's office, finance department for working on this. This is a great opportunity for the county. It really is scrubbing all of our debt and looking at all of our opportunities. It's going to save our taxpayers 2.8 million over the life of this. And it also gives the board a lot of opportunity to continue the projects we have on debt. And so removing the infrastructure GRT from the pledge will create cash flow for the next year. And as Eric mentioned, going forward, if we need to pledge that, we'll have that ability. So it just provides a lot more options for the board while saving money for our taxpayers. And I want to thank RBC and NMFA for kind of giving us the heads up on this coming up, letting us know. Commissioner O'Donnell mentioned NMFA's AAA rating. That's why we use them so much. I'm very proud of Taus County's triple B ratings, because that's about as good as it's going to get for a county our size. We're not going to have a much better rating unless we bring in a lot more revenue. But that triple B rating we received this year was a positive thing, and it was with a positive outlook instead of the negative outlook that the state has. So we wouldn't have been able to get these kinds of savings doing this bond issue on our own without NMFA as a partner. And I really appreciate RBC helping people to scrub these numbers and give us the best advice going forward.
So the vote of this, what kind of a.
So last meeting, you did vote to approve the application to NMFA, as Eric mentioned, that's on today. I don't anticipate any issues with that either, but we answered all their questions. There's two subcommittees that NMFA has already gone through with no, very little questions. So the next step would be publishing for an ordinance, and we'd have a public hearing. And then that's when the board would have their final say so on approving this at that public hearing, which I think we're anticipating in April.
Did we have that currently scheduled for April 17th? That big change?
All right. Anything else, Commissioners?
Eric, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. In light of Commissioner Romero has a commitment that he needs to get to, I'm going to ask Commissioners that we amend the agenda at this time to move item 9C to right after the consent agenda, because we need to get all action items out of the way before we lose our quorum. So I would entertain a motion at this time to move 9C fiscal year 2018, '19 budget discretion to become the next item of, unless there's an item of the consent agenda that's pulled naturally that asked to by procedure, be taken care of following the business. So there would be following approval of consent agenda and items listed in the consent. So from A to B, and the second. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Okay. Next item, and we, for the record, we have Commissioner Gallegos on the line now. Hey, Mark.
Good morning.
You're making us burritos.
I was told I was on my burrito, so sorry for everything out there.
All right, they must be good. All right. Item A is approval of entering into an agreement with Facility Build to construct a new senior center and Clark's storage building to give authority to the chairman or manager to sign the CBS agreement. The presentation today will be Mr. Brian Kilcup, the CEO President, and Jessica Leavitt, the account representative. Thank you both for being here on this very historic and much-needed project.
Thank you so much, Commissioners. We thankful to give us the opportunity. We've got a couple of projects to deal with, start with the senior center. It presented very unique challenges for us, and we worked in collaboration with county administration. Everybody had a chance to work on this project. These projects, you know, are very difficult and get a lot of competing resources for space. The programming of this particular building, and very well-designed programming that is. And we are, we're glad to say and be thankful that we were able to meet the budget through lots of discussions. It was a challenging budget. We were able to get there with a design and a constructed price. The next step with your approval obviously would be going to permit at that point. I've been about Facility Build, we've been, we've been in business since 1994. We have completed over $250 million of these type of projects, all successful over the years, and are quite capable of completing this for the benefit of the county, Commissioners, and the taxpayers. Any questions about the senior center? It's, we just had one last important question to set aside earlier, but this project actually has two components. It has a, it has a new senior center, but it also has clerk storage. One, we need the design challenges. The wood machines, clerk's office wanted to store them, secure location. And so on the west end of the building, we were able to work in this, combine these two functions in the design for the benefit of both uses.
You achieve that by keeping the cost down of the, having a sprinkler by a two-hour rated.
Yep.
All through there, so that state does, I don't know, $15,000, $35,000.
Yeah, at least.
And it's better protection for harness equipment, because we have a premature discharge of the system for the customer damage. So I applaud you for coming up with that solution.
Thank you. Our architects worked on that quite some times.
Pro sprinkler system, don't get me wrong, there's experience in fire replacement, but there's certain times where it doesn't make sense. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes, thank you. How many bathrooms are in the senior center?
Two, men's and women's.
Just two?
Well, multi-stall, but two locations.
Two parking locations.
Size four, they are bathrooms with size in accordance with code, the number of occupants.
Could you please look into, you know, given we're headed towards climate change and the unpredictability of water underground issues with water, could you look into low-flush toilets, low-flush sinks, or also in the kitchen, making sure that we conserve water? I think this is something we have to set an example for, and I think it's important. Would you be able to consider that?
Absolutely, and we will make sure that that is addressed.
All right.
It's very important consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mike, Commissioner, thank you. Before we go any further, Mike, thank you for hustling up the funds to get this more, more accurate. It would be possible, posting your book, getting this pretty much almost all paid for.
Trying to do this as good for the limited amount of time, and it was time frame was, you know, difficult to meet, but we were able to meet it, so it took a while, but I got a thing set, you know, step for charge to win. Again, I want to thank Facility Build and management and everybody that was involved, because this is all actually a team effort.
And this is what you want? This is what you want?
This is the phase one of it.
Right. And what, what the resources you have, this is what you want?
Yes, with what we had available in funding, Mike, but we actually, the design of the building by Mike is actually built where we can actually add on as we need to add on. And it's going to, as we're growing, we've been averaging close to seven, six meals a day, just lunch here in this side, and that's quite a bit. Then we serve 100 meals, just, nobody even on holidays. So we're growing, people are really starting to come to our, utilize our center. And with this new, a year or two with this new senior center, we're going to be pretty full. I'll be on seniors are very excited about this new building. They can hardly wait to get it, so it's going to be interesting, it's going to be fun.
I'll go, Mr. O'Donnell, then I'll go to Commissioner Romero, and then Mr. O'Donnell.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to go give a quick breakdown on the financing. I also want to thank the clerk and the clerk's office for contributing as well. It was a very collaborative effort. There are needs specific to the clerk's storage, and the main one being temperature control. And this will provide that temperature control setting for their voting machines. But it also helps us save a little bit of money on the dirt work, the collaborative efforts upfront to make this happen. So with the 1.275 million we got from the Geo Bond, a contribution of roughly $200,000 from the clerk department, the general fund will have to make up the rest. And so the total cost on this is just under $1.8 million. There's also going to be some expenses outside of this particular contract, things like final cameras, security, things like that. And as I mentioned, some of the dirt work, things upfront aren't part of this. So the total cost down at the door for the commission will be roughly half a million that we'll be asking in the future in a move from our reserves into the fund to complete this project. So I just wanted to give a little breakdown, thank the clerk's office as well for their contribution.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, the location then is that intersection of Loahto Place, and I'll write that corner where the carpool truck is.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, the other thing, so looking at the clerk's storage will be the north side, is that correct? Or is it west?
So if you're looking at your drive, the clerk's storage is basically the entrance into, into the existing parking lot.
It will be parallel to Loahto Place.
Yes, we did look at it both ways, and meeting with architects, when facility build, having the clerk's storage on the west side was the best option. I know we discussed it both ways. We looked at pricing it out as a separate building, but like the chairman said, that was going to be a lot higher price. I think it was closer to $100,000 higher, and we do have those numbers upstairs. So it was still most cost-effective for them to share a building.
Mr. Chairman, I like this placement, because it also allows the entrance to be facing south.
Right.
You know, it's kind of one of the situations that we have with a lot of these buildings is ice builds up.
That's one of the side considerations.
I appreciate that.
Additionally?
Additionally, I've added that we probably had, we've had probably six meetings, around six meetings, three of which with seniors and staff. So that staff actually had a lot of great input into it, and they were concerned about the sun, the ice melt. Shora had a lot of input in it, and Mike also did show this to the seniors. So this has been thoroughly embedded on with staff and the seniors as well.
And if I, Mr. Chairman, is it possible?
I did meet with aging and long-term services department, they were here last week. We had a capital outlay training, and I showed them the plans, they really loved the design, they loved the plans. They also encouraged me to, because I told them that all we were going to need funding for for phase two is parking lot and that other addition for the patio and some other minor costs that I'm actually working with Facility Build. So currently I'm in the process now of drafting a capital outlay proposal. This will be a severance tax bond proposal, so the funding will come sooner if it's approved. But it's going to be.
National number, Mike?
It's going to, hopefully, it'll be after, after the next legislative session. So with this funding, we'll be able to pave the parking lot and get these other additions. But I got a timeline of, I got to turn everything in by April 15th. So I've been working on this since for about a month already, working on this capital outlay project. It's a lot of work, but I think we can get it done. And I think it's just going to be a great, great community needed senior center for constituents, for our seniors. They deserve better at home, our seniors are at their dawn of life, and they need a place where they can contribute. And I can tell you one thing, they're very, very excited about what's taking place. So again, I couldn't do it without the help of the management, the staff. And again, it was all a great team effort. I want to thank everybody that assisted us, so thank you.
Mike, what is the setting capacity?
We're going to have 108 table settings, and we can actually add another 20 more if we need to. So it'll be great, plus we have the multi-burber food will be able to use for, for exercise and bingo and other activities that we provide. We also provide tai chi, we provide various activities for our seniors, so.
And the second phase will consist of.
I mean, pardon?
Second phase.
It'll be the parking lot and the patio, maybe the parking lot, so.
We'd like to construct a patio off the east door and have probably a white foot wall around the patio. And we had to cut that out because of cost considerations, but it's already designed.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
And maybe at some point we can talk about energy efficiency. I know there's some plans that the county manager can address, but also if there's a way, we are now looking at green infrastructure and how we can use the water, rainwater if it rains, that could water the plants or be used in some way. So you have a drainage plan where it's not just running down the road or running down the driveway. So I don't know if you've thought about this, but I would like to see some kind of green infrastructure related to the roof, where the water goes, and if we have a pond or something like that, so we can save that water. But the energy efficiency, I think, is important. water. But the energy efficiency, I think, is important. You know, we all want to know these, what our impact is on the carbon footprint, and I know there's some communities doing climate action plans where they do an analysis of their buildings, and they see how they can cut down on energy, so maybe can you put in those lights that go on and off when you leave a room, so we're not wasting energy?
All terrific ideas, and that is certainly, we can consider all of that. What's great about the design-build method, which is what we used on this, which is what facility build specializes in, is that it is design and construction in a bundled process, under one contract, one guaranteed maximum price. When design and construction are independent of each other, it can be slow, it can be expensive, some of these ideas are not brought up early on, so then later with the contractor, it's trying to get those things done. What's nice is that all of these things you're mentioning can be brought at the forefront of the project with design build, much like the senior center, that's exactly how this was developed, with everything in mind from the beginning. Ninety percent of the construction cost savings happen in design, so the most important thing is to collaborate design and construction, so that's how this is being done. So all of these can certainly be brought up from the beginning with our company in the design phase, as we continue to develop the design, permit, construction seamlessly for this project and any other projects going forward as we see how this fits the needs of the county, so.
So I do see you have a detention pond here, is that what I'm talking about, for the collecting the rainwater from the roads?
Yes, that is. We don't have a recycle system back to landscape, landscape, pavement, those are all phase two considerations, but the building is high efficiency from the very beginning, and it will accommodate your request, so that'd be a great thing to work into the phase two things that Mike mentioned.
And I'm wondering if our county manager could comment on, is this one we're going to work on, the issue we have with Kit Carson, before the meter, after the meter, or could you maybe explain that? Is that, is this going to tie into it?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, that would be a much better question for Richard Sanchez, but as I understand it, yes, that is something we're going to address before we put the power onto that. That is one of our responsibilities outside of this contract, is to get the power to the site, and so that is a big discussion we've had. It's a directive of mine, and we'd really like to accomplish that as part of this, and would get us outside of that primary meeting, or into the primary meeting that we've been discussing for years and years since the complex is built, so definitely need initiative internally to make sure we get the power to them as required, but yes, internal initiative we're pursuing.
Thank you very much.
Good, thank you for your questions.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Trump?
Just so, we're the chairman members of the commission, so today we're asking you to approve the, for you or the under to enter into a CES agreement and approve the concept that's before you, and the budget that's before you, so we can go to construction in the month of April. We still need to sign a CES agreement, but this is the guaranteed max price, and also included in the packet is the price of steel is going up, so we're also trying to lock in the price for the building within a week.
So, Mr. Chairman?
For the second, with another quick question.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to approve the entering into the agreement with Facility Build to construct a new senior center and clerk's storage building, and we have the authority to the chairman or county manager to sign the CES agreement.
Just a quick question, will you attempt to employ local labors?
Thank you. Yes, in fact, we have already reached out to several that we were aware of. We asked for any local support that you guys want to encourage or would like for us to reach out to. We do have pre-qualification in line with some of these locals already, and that's what's nice about using the CES contract as well. You know, low bid is low bid, and that's not what this is, this is best value, and so we're able to keep things local, we're able to keep the money in the community, strengthen the community, and that's what we're all about. So certainly, there are locals involved, and we have done our best to involve local support as well.
Okay, I'd like to see a report at the end or in the middle of how many locals you've hired, and then can they be placed under your bond insurance, so they're not?
Correct, we'll bring them on as our subcontractors. We have reached out to several, some decided not to, and I can get you a list of who, which companies we have did respond, and which decided that they did not want to take part in this particular project at this time.
And Commissioner, this is wage rates, because it's more than 60,000, which obviously is higher paying.
The Davis Bacon?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. Clerk Coloro.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gallegos?
Mark?
Chairman Thambr?
Yes. Okay, then we'll move right on to the next item real quick. Approval of entering into an agreement with Facility Build again to construct a new fire department building in Costilla, and we have authority to the chairman or the manager to sign a CES agreement. So that's the second set of plans, Commissioners. Same concerns, I'm pretty much sure. We want local labor, we want it to be energy efficient, we want it to be functional. Then, anything, Commissioners?
Yes, are there showers?
I think there is.
Okay, well, this is an issue I've heard that for decontamination, so I don't know if you could put a shower in there, but this is something for the future on decontamination.
Because you cannot do inside. Has to be outside. Do you want to take the contaminant inside the building?
Chairman, members of the commission, let's take a step back for a moment. As you're aware, we have the lower proceeds to construct new fire department buildings, so this new fire department building going up in Costilla is what's next, and then Mike has a plan, or the chief, Corvino, has a plan to deploy the other fire department businesses. The plans that you see in front of you, he's worked with the local fire chief as well as the rest of the fire chiefs, so this is going to be our standard plan for all fire departments going forward. There'll be cost differences for each of them based on the metal price, and also for the earthwork, but this is the plan that the fire chiefs have signed on to, and this can also go from a four bay to a three bay. The chap in front of me is a four bay, while other fire departments are going to be at a three bay. Do you want to jump in there, Chief?
I'll jump into the shower thing. The reason there's no showers in this is because it's a volunteer department, we're not going to have paid staff there. The other thing, when you decon, you have to decon outside, so that's something that we would have to do. We can buy basically a portable shower, that they would decon outside. Correct, and then what we do, what we will though install there is we can install washer and dryer for their PPE, their structure equipment, that would be part of that process, but there's no shower in there because we're not going to have paid staff in there.
Well, in the future, in our budgeting, I think we need a decontamination. You heard those reports of women who are firefighters getting breast cancer, inhaling all different fumes, and the same with men, that I think we have to protect our firefighters, so if you could keep that in mind, and maybe even bring back a proposed location for a decontamination area, even in the simplest possible way to do that, I think we need it, and I think we need to think about it in all these future fire department buildings.
I agree, and the way we decon is, they have to wear their PPE. This is, all these, what you're talking about, all these stats are based off firefighters not wearing the right PPE, or also taking off their SCBA mask while they're doing salvage and overhaul. So we, as the county and all the fire departments, we already are doing that by making sure they wear their PPE during salvage and overhaul. Each district has wipes that are made to decon around their necks, the beds of their elbows, stuff, and that's where all this is getting from. So if they do a simple wipe with a brush or a wipe, that takes off about 90% of it, and then we have them brush off their gear prior to getting back into the truck or anything of that nature. So I get what you're saying with the decon, but each department will have their own decon showers, but that's more specifically for hazmat. I think what you're getting at is more for structured fires, and that's how we take our stuff with brushes and wipes and stuff to rid all of that carcinogens off their gear and off their person by wiping themselves. So decon showers themselves would be more for hazmat situations, what you're getting at is more for structured firefighting, which we already do take precautions for that right now.
So a motion? So move, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the entering into an agreement with Facility Build to construct a new fire department building in Costilla, and give authority to the chairman or the manager to sign the CES agreement. Clerk Coloro.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Thambr?
Yes. Okay, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
For Mark, we can join.
These will become reality, yeah.
Okay, next item, Commissioners, is our consent agenda. I'll read the consent agenda. If there's any item that you wish to be discussed, we'll pull that, and that'll be the next order of business. Item A is approval of budget adjustment for solid waste operations 0202-1610. Item B is approval of budget adjustment for county attorney 0101-1020. Item C is approval of out-of-state travel and national reimbursement for John Olson of Latira Fire Department to attend the Iowa International Fire Chief Fire Conference in Fairfax County, Virginia from May 23rd to 27th of 2018. And ID, his request for approval for Anna Martinez, our county clerk, and Valerie McLea, her chief deputy to travel offering for the 2018 primary election school, March 26th to 28th, 2018.
Can I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as so presented?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second. Clerk Coloro.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Thambr?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to take off, and that's all for me.
That's fine, good luck with that.
Thank you very much. Awesome, yeah, a lot of good stuff going on.
Yes, this was really cool, good day, huh?
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, can you make, can you just have a five-minute break?
Well, we're losing quorum, so.
Okay.
It'll be just presentation the rest of the meeting, so.
Okay, sure. So it's okay for me to leave?
Yes.
Make them up, well, how do we do that if there's no quorum?
Just ask. It ceases now, so you can go take your break, and then Lupe can present to the two of you since you're no longer recording.
Did you want me to call?
Do I? I don't need, I can't make it.
No.
Okay.
Okay. Lupe, give us a sec while you get it set up and everything, and we'll be back with you in about five minutes. Okay, next item on the agenda then is the previously moved item 9C, fiscal year 2018-19 budget discussion. This will be presented by our finance director, Ms. Lupe Marquias, assisted with our county manager, Mr. Corvino. Hi, Lupe.
Hi, I'm Lurie. So today's presentation is basically going to give you a budget process from where we are right now. So for the purposes of today's meeting, I'm going to mention, actually, let me start off by saying, during our second quarter budget presentation, I did mention that financial planning for our 2018, 2019 budget is underway. Some of the things I won't discuss today are the budget process, the revenue projections, LGBMS, what that is, the self-fund benefits management, the Mexico Insurance Authority, centralized group to see, full-time positions being requested in the new budget cycle, and the management's initiative for consideration of a paribidown, and I will talk about some consolidation of capital funds that I wanted you to request and approve. So starting on budget process, the financial planning is underway. During the fiscal year Taus County Finance Department provides training to our staff and to departments as well. Right now, we're in the process of updating our budget workflows, and budget worksheets have been distributed to all our departments. Coordination with our fire districts for their budget preparation is also underway, and right now on revenue, you have the 2019 budget calendar. I realize we don't have all the commission on board, but I do need to speak about setting some dates for the budget work study and the adoption, so if you can just kind of grab the funds quickly.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to kind of chime in as we go if we can. We want to talk a little bit too about the budget process, and just let the commission know that as Ms. Marquias mentioned, we will talk more about specific departments, will be a work study or a department matter for solid waste, public works, and he, they've been working on their needs and providing us that, so we have that pretty well taken care of, and we'll come back with a more detailed discussion on that prior to May, as well as talking about capital outlay, I mean, capital fund. We're very confident the bill's coming this year, so I think we can really talk about capital sooner than we had to last year, when it wasn't as much of a sure thing, so. Also, revenue projections, as Ms. Marquias mentioned, we're early in the process on that part, so we're assuming flat, like we always do flat property tax, and GRT, we're looking at flat to budget, and so what that means is we've always budgeted pretty conservatively. We're not looking to increase our budgeted amount of GRTs, we're going to keep it flat to budget, but there may be opportunity for more projects with the tip on sale, that may fuel some more projects hopefully, and then, obviously, a lot of the projects the county's doing this year are going to help with our GRTs. We have a few big things going on, and that's going to fuel some of our GRT, but we're still going to budget flat, so.
So during this meeting, if you guys could just decide on the work study date for me, and for the budget adoption, I would appreciate that. So as Mr. Marquias mentioned, for revenue projections, we are going to do that flat, so this is basically just a snapshot of what we submit to DFA as part of our budget submission. This is a budget supporting schedule, basically showing and reflecting that Taus County has a planning budget to the 91.5% as our collection rate. We will be using that rate for the interim budget. So we're looking at the general fund operating budget, Taus counties differ than municipalities. Municipality gets most of their revenue budget from GRTs, Taus County and any other county gets theirs primarily from property taxes. Taus County gets about 85% from our property tax collection.
And real quick, I just want to highlight on here, the fees collected. It's only a 4% amount, but 4% of our total budget is about 544,000 a year, and so fees collected are from the hard work and people of Taus County, and all of our staff, and most, about half of the 544 comes from just the planning department, and so I think that's something I just wanted to highlight, because it's really based on our hard work at county and the staff, understanding that we're collecting fees, and it helps offset some of the revenue that we get from the other sources, so I just wanted to highlight that. I'm very proud of our staff, we're, the fees collected.
Could I ask, last year's property tax collection rate, what was the actual?
The actual rate that we used was 91.5%.
I know, but I see that, but what, is that what we, I thought it was a little higher.
A little higher, I was thinking it was 93, 92%, but we dropped it.
Just to be conservative, and then if it goes back up, that means there's one way?
Okay, exactly, we need that determination.
If the collection rate is really, we can thank the sheriff's office for their hard work and efforts on collections, and I think the fact that they do work with taxpayers, giving them options to pay over time, we have a little higher collection rate. We're just conservative, because that is potentially what we're going to lose things if there was a problem in making your payments, you're going to push those payments back, but Taus County taxpayers, they pay their payments, and for the most part, I think people are real quick to pay their property taxes, and we appreciate that.
So moving on to new requirements, so at the GFA level, we have mandated a new requirement for all local public bodies, including counties, for us to have a web-based system that they are requiring us to put our budget on. So it's also required for special districts as well, so if you have any small special districts in your area, they would also be subject to putting this, their budget on the LGBMS website. The required budget submission is for the 2019 final budget, so in the interim process, it'll just be like in the trial phase, but by the time we submit the final budget in July, it'll be in LGBMS format. This will allow for the state to utilize a standardized chart of accounts for everyone, so that way, as they start collecting the data from all the counties and municipalities, then they're able to then generate some reports for their reporting purposes at the state level. So they have, they've had their first round of training in November, and their second round of training is now the week of April 2nd through April 6th. It's a three-hour training session, it's only in the morning, but the afternoon, we're scheduled to go on the 4th of April. But this LGBMS does is it allows us to import our budget electronically into But this LGBMS does is it allows us to import our budget electronically into their software. It allows us to prepare the quarterly reports onto their software and report any of our budget adjustments onto their software. And it allows a validation process to continue, so as we enter here, data entry, I have someone that will approve here on this end before it goes to their analyst to approve on our end. So it's going to basically be a form of approving the new process all the way down. And Taus County, we do plan to join the pilot group now in March two thousand eighteen. So right now, we are working with our software provider, which is Tratt. And to get our charter accounts to near the state's charter accounts. And so it's called a crosswalk, and so that's what the process we're doing right now. And it should be completed by the end of the month.
There are costs to it?
There's no cost to the counties for that.
And then will you be able to transfer this information onto our new website as far as some of the data?
Some of the data can, once we data dump it into their website, then we can generate the reports. So as I start the two thousand nineteen budget cycle, when I do the DFA before quarterly, it'll be on their reporting process. So when I give you the information, it's going to be what I pulled from their website.
And so we could also put it on our website?
Yes. Yes, within with our new website, yes.
Yeah, great. Okay.
Some of the things that Taus County has undertaken. So back in January of two thousand sixteen, Taus County implemented a self-funded benefits management program for our medical, dental, vision, and disability for our employees. For the first two years, Taus County didn't see any increases, but in January two thousand eighteen this year, we did see a five percent increase. I provided to a courtesy copy of the budget to actuarials to try and show the commission where we stand as far as what we've seen savings and kind of like some trends that have happened. So in two thousand sixteen, budget to actuarials, Taus County budgeted a little over two million dollars. What we cleared was about one point eight, leaving us a difference of two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. So keep in mind that the budget cycle for any health insurance, the effective date is January. Our fiscal year starts in July, so there's always that six-month window from previous before we actually started our self-funded program. In two thousand seventeen, the budget to actuarials were two million dollars, what I budgeted, and what actually got paid out was about one point five, close to one point six million dollars. Some things happened during the state plan and then during our own plan, where some of our employees opted to not take on family coverage, so they took up single to his child and then the other family, the other employee just picked up employees, so that was a savings for them. We have been in early discussions with our current provider, Regis Signa, and we did meet with them. It's still early on in the phase, but these are some things that we're going to be faced with. It's going to be a medical rate increase, about twelve to twenty percent. So what that will do is allow us to open up, go to the open market to see if we can find medical insurance for Taus County at a reasonable, fair cost to our employees and of course to the county itself. And I'll let Mr. Corduro talk about that.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, this is a very telling number. As you can see, we are saving money in health insurance by the changes we make. And I want to make it clear again to the commission that we have not cut our benefits. We do still have better or lower in out-of-pocket costs than the state plan. The state plan, you pay more out-of-pocket for your copays and for your deductibles than we do here at the county. We will continue to shop. You see the difference that we have in this budget here of roughly four hundred and sixty-three thousand. That is where I am kind of buying the para buy down. I do feel like we've made the good moves, we've saved the money, but that needs to go right back to the employees that deserve that. So that's why I feel we can really afford that para buy down while still giving us the ability to meet a twelve to twenty percent increase. I don't want to accept the twenty percent increase. We will shop and we will be as competitive as possible in the market. We've also implemented a lot of healthcare initiatives at the county and I appreciate that county employees are taking advantage of that. That's what's going to keep our rates down is all of us working together and working on our own personal health to keep those rates down. So we will keep shopping and I, I was proud of the savings that we had. And I think that we've had a couple of hiccups with Signa perhaps, but for the most part, we have good coverage and it's certainly comparable and not better than that at the state. Another thing I'll mention with state coverage is it is tiered. So the more money you make at the state, the more you pay into the coverage. And at Taus County, we haven't made those changes yet, so we still do provide a great benefit to our employees.
Mr. Chairman, on the para buy down, when would that take effect and what would employees, what kind of additional paycheck would they see?
She's got a presentation. There's a couple slides specific to that. You can see it. I hope that'll answer your question.
So another budget process that Taus County takes into consideration is our increase to our multi-line, our law enforcement, and of course, our workers' contribution. So Taus County, we usually, I usually budget about ninety-seven to ninety percent increase. For the nineteen budget cycle, I will project an increase of ninety percent. It might not be that high, but it's better for us to budget a little bit more and be safe than have to then do budget adjustments to accommodate any increases that will be planned for the nineteen budget cycle. And so I have provided your courtesy what it was right now for the two thousand eighteen total right now, Taus County paid one point three. If we go up ninety percent, that would be a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars increase, bringing our two thousand nineteen budgeted amount to one point four million dollars.
And I'd like to note that that's the minimum.
Yes.
You know, there's other counties of the twenty-nine that are in the pool of the thirty-three. And another note I'd like to put on this is that it's going to stay at the minimum. We now have software in the multi-line and law enforcement pools to where you can get different stuff in Lower Urban with the NMAC multi-line pool. Showed us in Taus County in the last three years is on a steady decline in our risk management losses. And too much, which I'm very proud of, is we're only one percent of what's being paid out of the county still in the pool. So one percent of what's being paid out, we're only, we're only that. Yes, there are some counties, Harding, DeBaca, and stuff like that, that are very small counties that are zero percent, but one percent for a county our size is we're doing one of the best.
And Mr. Chairman, thank you for being on the multi-line board because you're educating us and helping us. We did get that award at the NMAC conference here in June for risk management. It's paying off, so thank you.
It is.
I also thank Chairman Corduro for bringing back what he learns at those multi-line meetings. It's not always easy to sit there and hear what's going on in the state and how that could impact us, but it is very beneficial to hear what we need to do to try and alleviate those issues for our county. I've also heard compliments from NMAC, the new policies that have been adopted by this board, and I appreciate that. That's the kind of leadership we need to get us to a better place where we're not paying as much upfront or on the back end. So the risk management was a huge step for Taus County, having that department has really come a long way for us.
Thank you. One thing to note is Taus County started centralized purchasing about four fiscal years ago, primarily for our office supplies, our employee training, and our Xerox leases. That has proven to be successful. Most of these are in our community resources budget and our purchasing department budget. It will also be the fourth year that Taus County has created a fleet department. This fleet department has continuously provided uninterrupted services to our fleet. And within time, hopefully, they'll start serving our larger fleet like our fire trucks and our EMS vehicles. Last fiscal year, Taus County did consolidate similar departments by creating an operations division. It is now time that these ladies in the operations division assume a role, assume their role by having a flexibility of their own budget. So what I mean by that is right now, we have been split into different funds, so when they're going to training or when they're going somewhere, it's hard for them to determine what fund to utilize. So what we're going to do in the budget cycle is I'm going to give them a small operating budget and I'm going to put them all together in the salary schedule, so that way we can then see who the operations division administrative team are. We've had some requests for full-time positions. I'll let our county manager go over them, but right now, there's about six requests that are real and a total of about three hundred and forty thousand. That would be the annual budget impact. I'll let Mr. Corduro go over those requests.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, there's been actually more than six requests, quite honestly, but out of all the requests we've gotten and a lot of correspondence I've had with either constituents or our staff, we've kind of narrowed it down to six key positions that we would like to kind of propose for this budget year. As you see, the total estimated cost is around three hundred and forty thousand dollars. Quite honestly, I don't know if we can afford all six of these even at this time. We'll see as we go further along with our revenues. But the couple of the positions as mentioned would be one more adult attention officer, two sheriff's deputies, fire marshal slash blood plane slash compliance officer, co-compliance officer, and PIO, economic development, public relations. Those are the positions we've identified. I wanted to thank Mr. Ed B. Hill in planning for taking the opportunity that these have given to him based on retirements and other positions they get in his office to restructure in a way that he's probably going to be able to create a co-compliance officer within his department without much more additional funding. So that's one opportunity. We may not need that full position. We've also have a lot of other room to look at, our overall structure. Taus County is still underway with a compensation and classification study. Unfortunately, it's not completed yet. Our goal was to have it completed in conjunction with this preliminary look at the budget. That may not get done until May, so we're still leaving some flexibility for what suggestions may be brought from that plan. And one thing I want to note too is the longevities that are out there for union-eligible employees. Those longevities are roughly a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year. That's something that this commission approved in the budget and also accepted as our personnel policies. So I appreciate that that's something you've already given back to our employees that are union-eligible. We're currently going through performance evaluations for department heads, which will be quickly followed by their evaluation of supervisors in their departments. So that will also come with a salary increase based on their performance. So I appreciate all that the commission has done for our employees over time. I think it's never enough for them and I know that they work really hard and it'd be great if we could give larger raises every year continuously, but we're very conservative and we are trying to do what we can to put more money in the pockets of our employees. And so that's when we get into the para talk, that's a big initiative that I feel is important for us at Taus County because that will help put more dollars in every pocket with every raise they get into the future. So raises don't mean much if half of it's being deducted out for other issues that are other requirements that are there for our employees. So if we can help in those deductions, it's going to put more money in the pockets of our employees.
And Mr. Chairman, you know, there's been public facilities, the director left, and in the last budget cycle, I can't remember if we agreed to hire two more in that department or two part-time, but I know they're understaffed, but so I guess what I'm asking, will we see kind of savings in that department now or?
Yes, there will be vacancy savings for this year. We do understand the importance of filling those positions. We had advertised for the facilities manager. Then we do have a temporary that we just hired to help with their workflow. And going into the summer, we'll have some flexibility for temporary seasonal employees to help with the parks. And they should be, when they're fully staffed, they should have the help they need. We do know right now they're not fully staffed and they're still, you know, short-staffed and they're making the best of what they have available to them, but that is an important department and quite honestly, they're another one that could use another FTE we gave them last year. So right now, we're hoping that we can just get them fully staffed and see how that impacts their operations.
And those temp positions helped last summer? We did that last summer, right? That helped?
Yes, as I understood it from staff, it helped tremendously and we have brought one of those temps to iron full-time. So the full-time position we created was able to bring in one of those temps. We had a good opportunity to work with the temp and they saw how the county worked, we saw they worked, and it turned out they were a really good fit for the county. It gives us all opportunity to see how people can work for us and let them know the benefits of working for Taus County.
Thank you. So in Taus County, Taus County has four plans. We have municipal plan four, we have police plan five, and we have a detention plan one. So right now, Taus County is buying one percent from our employees' contribution. So on the top portion, you'll see the employer and then right next to it, you have the employee breakdown. So twelve percent is what we report to para, but Taus County's paying the thirteen point zero five percent. Taus County reports seventeen point fifteen percent to para, but the employees only dock sixteen point fifteen percent. And so on for the under twenty K and municipal plan and the detention plan. This is the next page. So this is a management initiative that was discussed earlier. Taus County does plan to do a para buy down and that has a budget impact for you. So the last time Taus County assumed about a para buy down was in September of two thousand thirteen. That's when we bought one percent for all our county plans. The cost for the county in fiscal year two thousand seventeen was approximately eighty-seven thousand dollars. The goal is to try to see if we can buy another buy down before the close of the current fiscal year. I'll let Leandra talk about that. And I also have provided you what the cost would be for an additional one percent buy down and what the cost would be for a one point five percent buy down if Taus County chooses that.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I want to make note too that in two thousand thirteen, when we did the last para buy down of one percent, we actually had a one point five percent state mandated increase. So although we did put that money out, buy down for our employees, they didn't see the benefit in the sense of more money in their pocket. In fact, they still got short by a half a percent because of the state mandate. We want to be ahead of it this time. Right now, there's not any hard discussion about a para increase, but there is certainly a lot of talk and discussion about it in the future. And I think it would be to our benefit to do it now so that the employees can actually feel that benefit in their pocket as well as to make us more competitive. Our neighboring local governments like the town, Ruribut County, they've done the maximum of buy down that's possible and allowed by para. That means that for a ten-dollar salary at the town and a ten-dollar salary at the county, we're going to take home more money working at the town. We need to be competitive with our neighboring local bodies so that our salaries reflect the hard work that we're getting out of our employees.
I wanted to say one thing on that planet and the reason I kind of pushed this was in my time at the town, previous mayors and council, as he said, they over time enacted the full amount that they do. That's the first and only real raises in employee field because that's directly back in their pocket. If we give them a two percent and taxes go up however much and insurance goes up, then they never see increase in take home. This is what puts more money in the checking account doing this and I think it's a more valuable raise. Yes, it is different for the senior employees that want to be improving their three-year average for the base of their, their retirement benefit, but it also helps them absorb their retirement a little bit better because they're not paying into PERA anymore when they retire. And so when you get out, it's pretty much a wash what your take home is, with the exception of the retiree healthcare if they choose that route. So if we really want more money in our employees' pockets, this is definitely.
What's the maximum amount reference, Mr. Chairman?
Seventy-five percent of the total cost of living contribution. So we could go up to seventy-five percent on the, the previous slide panel showed you where we're at on the employee as an example of seventeen point one five. You could take seventy-five percent of that seventeen point one five, and I think that's roughly thirteen or so total. The one thing to note though is you can't ever go back on this. So once you get to, once you adopt these, you're locked in. There's no way of rescinding it or coming back. Ruribut County, when they experienced some of their budget issues last year, tried to see if they could get out of that obligation and there was no way for it. That is an obligation we carry forward for perpetuity and I think it's important that we do it, but we got to do it thoughtfully and incrementally to make sure that the county can absorb and maintain that amount. The amount of one percent, as you see on the slide, is about one seventy-four, one hundred and seventy-four thousand per year. The one and a half percent would be two hundred and seventeen thousand per year. It is a chunk of money, but I think it's well worth it. And as the chairman mentioned, it's dollar for dollar in our employees' pockets, not...
Is that the max in the one point five?
No, that's not the max. That would get us up to a total of two and a half percent minus the seventeen. It's roughly fifteen percent out of the seventy-five. We still have a ways to go to get to the max.
And what do you recommend? The one point five to start with? I mean, I would think it could help. This isn't a little pay raises that...
I think we can afford the one point five and our employees definitely deserve that, if not more. So I will be recommending the one point five when we bring it forward for formal adoption of the resolution.
So the actual impact to the employees on the next slide, and that would be an average employee that makes fifteen dollars an hour. Right now, they have a current savings of twelve dollars because we're buying the one percent. If we buy the extra one percent, that's another twelve dollars, so that'd be twenty-four dollars. But if we buy the one point five percent, that'd be thirty dollars, and they would see every paycheck. And then during the fiscal year, it'd be about seven hundred and eighty dollars is what they would take home every year. So kind of the breakdowns, you can see the yearly comparison and the bi-weekly comparison for an employee that makes $15 an hour.
And once again, that's dollar-for-dollar. It's pre-tax, so there's no, they're not gonna have a tax hit on this. It's dollar-for-dollar in their pocket because it's already a pre-tax amount.
So before the close of the fiscal year, I am planning to come before you to consolidate a few of our capital funds. So the first fund we have is our 103 fund. That's known as our capital, the Taos County Administration Judicial Complex Fund. It's primarily funded by excess GRTs identified, as mentioned this morning, for capital infrastructure needs with the small amount that we have budgeted to our public works department. Our next fund is our Fund 399, also known as our Capital Enhancement Fund. It's funded primarily 100% with PILT, and the revenue does come up at close of the fiscal year, anticipated to come in about $1.6 million with needs in the current budget that were identified at 1.8, $2.8 million. Our last fund is our 3401 fund. There's a small residual balance in this fund from our refinance of our 2011 construction fund that we talked about this morning during our refinance options, was for the construction bid lots. The only revenue that's being generated in this fund right now is investment income. As of February, the investment income to this fund is about $37.40. So now that DFA is required in standardized account accounts, and Taos County is working on consolidating our funds to streamline our processes, it would be in the best interest of the county to consolidate these three capital funds into one fund so that we're not trying to piecemeal projects and trying to figure out how funding sources. So some of the things I'm facing right now in the 399, for instance, is even though we have about $2.8 million in requests, the cash isn't always available because I've transferred cash out for our grants, and so there's an impact there. Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, I know you've got something more important that I'm gonna say, but could we set up a line item for the art and artifacts committee? Because they're gonna, it'll be a 12.750 for the new...
We've already stepped up the...
You set that, but do you have a line item specifically for art and artifacts? Because they'll be making the recommendation, I don't know, I don't, I just, just a question.
So right now, the Fund 3401 has been much for the arts and artifacts. That was part of the original 1% of this complex. We've pretty much accomplished the required amount because the 1% is only on capital appropriations. It's not on a loan or anything like that. The only capital appropriation received for this building, I think, was $250,000. So the 1% of this building was small, but the commission at that time went ahead and authorized more money for arts. We still have some leftover, so that is in there. We talked about the $5,000 that was moved into that specific parts and artifacts. That's available to them now, so they are able to use that. The other thing I do want to expand on 3401, that balance is necessary right now. We've been in this complex long enough that we've identified plenty of needs and things that we need to make improvements on. And I'll use the changers as an example. I know we need to update and upgrade our audiovisual. The clerks need better recording. They would prefer better structure of the layout as well as for our staff, so that's one initiative. There's a lot of things that need to be done here at the complex and at the courts and at the jail that will pretty much expand the balance of that 3401. The 103 fund, that was created at the time of building this complex, kind of as a requirement with the loan and the bond statement. There was also the paribit property loan that was tied to that 103, which we paid off recently. At this time, I don't feel there's anything that ties us to the specifics of that fund. I think, as you heard this morning from Eric Harrigan, RBC, if we free up the two capital infrastructure increments, theoretically, we could use those to help offset the only revenue source of the 399, which is PILT. So if we could add those two infrastructure increments to 399, we would be able to budget more revenue every year than just the 1.6, 1.7 on PILT. And then in the case of, in the future, if PILT does go away, we still are funding capital. We still have something going into capital to continue the pipeline of projects that have been created over the last few years.
So create a constant base instead of just going year-to-year with PILT.
Yes, exactly, and that allows us to think ahead and really be forward-thinking for our county. So it is, there's still a few research items to consider on this to make sure it isn't allowable, but I have a discussion with our treasurer as well and kind of remembering her history as the finance director at the time. I think we can pull this off, and it would make reporting easier as well. And when we're doing budget, you guys as commissioners and the public will find it easier to see all capital in one fund. I think it really makes sense. There are a few things in the 399 that we have now that will have to come out, things like litigation and judgments. We had it in 399, because most of the time it's a one-time, but that will come out, and we would be focused strictly on infrastructure-type projects, buildings, roads, and the engineering or architectural design that goes along with those projects.
Thank you. So as conclusion, and this is just, I could tell you a budget kickoff, I'm not giving any numbers or anything right now, this is just the process that we tend to honor in budget cycle. So one thing that we always have to keep in mind is public safety. So as emergency arises, we always have to accommodate our public safety departments and try to accommodate their purchases. One impact that does happen is rollover projects. We've seen it happen before where we encumber money in one budget cycle, it doesn't get paid, but it does hit the next budget cycle. So we refer to them as rollover projects. Sometimes we can't control them, sometimes we can. Temporary cash transfers, they roll over. If you recall in the budget cycle for the 2018 budget adoption, our detail of transfers page is already two pages long. So if we combine the three capital funds, it would be much easier for us to capture and track our transfer of cash for our temporary loans. We have unfunded mandates as always coming from the detention. We always have unfunded mandates, as we've heard, and lots of revenue that does come by. And revenue disruptors, if our GRTs get disrupted throughout the fiscal year, that also affects the budget cycle. So those are things we always keep in mind, and that's why we're gonna recommend a flat budget for the 2019 interim budget going into the final budget. And then again, we have limited resources. We always have more wants than what we can satisfy, but we are trying our hardest to identify the wants and needs of our county departments and give them an operating budget that they can use for their department.
Could you just briefly explain what unfunded mandates are specifically to the county?
Well, I'll give you a few because there's plenty. Basically, it's something that the state legislature or governor group decides the counties or local government's gonna have to foot the bill for without giving us any resources to do that. The courts is a big one, a public health building's another one. Jail is the biggest one, really. We hold all parole violators with no reimbursement cost to the county, not necessarily. They put aside a very small amount for the entire state. I think it was 2.5, 2.6 million that was put aside this year to service every county jail in the state. The needs are closer to 6.7 millions, something we heard this week at the MEC district meeting. It just blows my mind that the state doesn't step up for that, but that is something that if we reimbursed dollar-for-dollar, we would have a lot less general fund requirement into our jail. And so it is a problem. That's the biggest unfunded mandate that we have.
Are we still keeping a running total of what we are really owed? Because I think that might be a good legislative initiative for next year.
Yes, that we do bill. We still send a bill monthly for what we feel is overdue to us from the state. Of course, we do not receive anything from them, but we'll continue to bill them so they know that we're keeping track of what we're doing on their behalf. There's also some discussion we had on Tuesday at the MEC meeting, and I think that I really try and push at the state level of transports of DOC inmates. We are very far away from Habs, and Taos County has to move inmates back and forth for court baits here and there. We would like to see the state pick up some of that slack and allow us to take our detainees to Santa Fe, to any DOC facility, and have them then be responsible for their own inmate and getting them to their final stop or back to court or whatever the case may be. So I think a lot of the county managers and counties agree with that. We shouldn't have to be driving all the way to Habs and back every other week just to be taking people back and forth for court, especially if they're not our detainee, if they're our state's detainee inmate, that should be their cost.
So, Mr. Chairman, maybe we could talk about a resolution? And also, I imagine that comes out of the Department of Corrections budget, that we start lobbying our legislators on increasing that 2.5 million amount, and we have all those numbers ready. I think we could even start attending some of those interim legislative committee hearings to spread the word. Get MEC to pass a resolution, or we could lobby for that next year.
This is a MEC priority. It's been for a few years, and I think it's gonna be one of the top priorities going into next year. Actually, Senator Daniel Insolto was at the meeting on Tuesday, and he suggested for counties to throw all of their unfunded mandates into one bill and just throw it at the legislature so they can see the total impact, which would probably be in the 40 to 50 million dollar price range so that it really opens the eyes. He says, "You're not gonna get it. I guarantee you, you're not gonna get the money you're asking for, but it may take that kind of shock and awe type of approach for them to understand that they've pushed a lot of expenses onto the local governments." They also, in the discussion Tuesday, were pretty well aware of the money, or the tax burden that they've put on local governments. They have pushed the need to raise taxes from the state level to the local level. And the state, yeah, they haven't had to raise taxes over the last eight years. The local governments have statewide, and we are also included in that, unfortunately, but we have to do what we have to do to keep up our level of service for our taxpayers. I reminded them, we see our taxpayer every day in the hall. We can't go to the restroom without seeing the people that pay our salaries. They make decisions, and they never really have to answer to their constituent the way we do, and it's not fair that they're pushing all that down onto us at the local government level. So I agree, Commissioner, it's a big conversation. I think involving ourselves with the MEC's initiatives will get a lot more traction for all counties.
Steve Kulpman, actually, at our, the multi-line law enforcement retreat at Angel Fire, came up with a rant that we should all close our detention centers, put it back on the state, and let the state be responsible for detention services, which some people there said they felt that was within the state's constitution to do that. And just so you know, Fisher, there are counties that have closed their detention centers. It's just, it's the biggest expense, and they just can't do it.
We have a sample resolution? MEC?
Well, he was...
I mean, not on that, but I mean, yeah, but...
He really wants that to be looked at because what's killing counties are the detention centers.
Can we get a, maybe we'll just create our own resolution?
Killing the pools.
Department of Corrections.
I think they're working on it, Commissioner, or they would have some, they need to talk about providing that from MEC to us.
Okay, that'd be great, yeah.
And what's killing the pools, the law enforcement and the multi-line pool are, is that very subject as well.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm, I'm, basically, we're not getting a chance to ask. Well, they're breaking the rules. Go ahead. I wanted to give clarification. This conversation is going to the judicial system of detention centers. Where, again, Mr. Portobal, where does the disconnect with that regional youth detention center, since Alcoa just became a detention center, right? There's money there.
Mr. Vice Chair, if I understand your question, I think there is still an opportunity potentially with the site if we do have to make the decision to close the juvenile detention center as a whole. That was one of their concerns, is mixing the two, having the juvenile detention center with the RTC in the same building. So I believe Lieutenant Matoya is gonna pursue that opportunity if we do have to make the decision to shut down the juvenile detention center. And on that note, because I was gonna mention in our manager's report, but at this time, we are so severely short-staffed at the JDC that we are not gonna be able to accept female detainees in the juvenile for a while. We have made that clear to our partners. The majority of the females that we house are from other counties anyway, Cofax, San Ysid. We have very few that are actually Taos County responsibility, but we're looking at putting together a contract with Santa Fe County to make sure we have a place for them in the event that it is our responsibility. But that was a short-term decision that we were forced to make because of staffing issues. We just can't keep up with the needs without the volume there. So if I understand your question, Commissioner, we're still pursuing every opportunity for an RTC, whether it be in this building or looking for alternative places to house them.
Yes, I think, I just, I would ask if this commission would be able to make a decision sooner than later, because we, sometimes we take some ideas down the road, and then we may use out and/or lose interest, so, you know? I hope that we, as we're looking through all this budgeting processes, that we will be able to make those decisions down the road sooner than later. I apologize for not being here, and I'm gonna have to probably get to speak with another girl, we need to, with, with Mr. Portobal, but I just wanted to throw that out there today.
One thing I'd like to add to that, Vice Chair, Diego, there was talk and ideas when we're brainstorming there in Angel Fire about just opening up regional youth detention centers, because everybody doesn't need their own. And do it as a regional venture, and it would be like the agreement that Mr. Portobal spoke that we have at Santa Fe County, but maybe, you know, maybe we could be that for Upper Rio Reba, Cofax, and stuff like that. But that would then free that up if we went on the regional approach on that, and even maybe eventually our detention centers would be similar. They're doing that in other states, and it seems to have been a lot more efficient, and you also bring in the private industry that runs those facilities. It's more attractive for them to come in, and it would be done that way. So just another idea to add to your comment.
And then, Chris, I do agree that it is time for us to make a decision on the juvenile detention center. Last year, we needed to make the decision, and we really were hopeful, and I appreciate the commission giving us the ability to pursue the path, but this year, we do have to make a decision for the benefit of the entire county. There is, and I don't wanna make this sound insensitive, but there is an opportunity in a sense if we do have to close a juvenile center for improvements to the adult side. And we all know that there could be more improvements to our adult detention center. We could provide better mental behavioral health services, but the funds to do that would be available if the decision is made to shut the juvenile detention center down. So I agree with you, Commissioner, we will have to make that decision sooner than later.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could weigh in on that. The RTC in the jail is a bad idea, and I say that only because if you wanna change the opinion of the state, you're gonna have to change the licensing rules. And so I think it's a waste of time to continue to pursue an RTC in jail, and so I would support whatever you recommend needs to be done, and I see expansion up to the adult side. A chapel, a conference room, you've got the big gymnasium where we could start some kind of work program for people to make some money, or just, I mean, we could brainstorm how those other spaces could be used and, you know, maybe give inmates something to do, some kind of program, like wooden coat hangers that are stamped "Taos County." I, you know, we could all sit down and think about safe ways, something that wouldn't, you know, be unsafe, and start up some kind of business inside the jail. So I just, I'll support you on the reality of that. I mean, it's unfortunate, there's such a need, but we've got, we've got just as much need in that jail on the adult side.
Commissioner, we do intend to come back really soon with some harder numbers for you. There are certainly a lot of thoughtful conversations that are being, are occurring, and things we do need to realize will still be at an expense of ours. If we're not housing our juveniles here, we do need to find a place to house them, and there will be a cost to housing them somewhere else. So we gotta do our best to identify that pretty accurately for you and just bring back the numbers of what it would cost to add more detention officers and maybe some of the support staff for behavioral and mental health or re-entry programs. So we just want to make sure we have good numbers and are able to answer the majority of your questions before we bring back with a final suggestion.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So this concludes my presentation as far as the budget process and where we are right now. The month of April, we'll be meeting with the departments, and the fire districts took over their budget requests in detail. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. That brings us then to item 11A, which is an update to the commission on various items affected Taos County by our manager, Mr. Leandro Portobal.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a lot today, so I'm just gonna stay... Mr. Chairman, I don't have a lot today, so I'm just going to stay up here. We did already talk a little bit about the NAC district meeting. I was able to attend in August this Tuesday. Our treasurer was also there. It was a pretty good discussion. We went through a lot of the bills that were either sponsored by NAC or pushed by NAC or that did affect the counties in any way. I think we talked the most about the consolidation of the elections and how that's going to affect us and the clerk's office. It does seem to, for the most part, be a benefit, but we'll never know until, I guess, we go through it, experience it. One thing that was interesting was the creation of an election fund. So I had to ask questions about that. I asked the Senator Ayusoto, who gets that money? Well, that would be funded to the state, the Secretary of State, but it would be paid by, what they anticipate would be any municipalities that decide to opt into the November schedule or any small districts that would have otherwise had to pay for these elections on their own. And what we could do is apply for our reimbursable costs. So the cost of our poll workers or polling sites, we could then potentially apply for reimbursement to the Secretary of State. So the concept, it sounded good, and I hope that it does work out that way. And I hope it does help alleviate some of the costs for our clerk. But like I said, I don't know until we go through it, and I'm sure the clerk has more insight on it. But that was one that struck me. And then the other discussion was jails. We really got out into the, into a summative discussion about jails. Representative Gonzalez was there. Representative Jim Trujillo was there. And they understood, for the most part, where we're coming from. And they understood, the county manager from Rio Reba really was vocal as well about the concerns they had and healthcare and how difficult it is, especially in the community of Tera Maria, to find even just any healthcare, much less the healthcare requirements that are now mandated to us at our detention centers. So those are the main topics. It was a good meeting. There's a lot of meetings left. Our district meets this next coming Tuesday in Las Vegas. So if the opportunity arises, I encourage you to go ahead and attend. I think Mr. Hamil is going to be attending that meeting so that we can get another perspective specific to our district. Also, on Tuesday, I attended a board of finance meeting in San Faye, first thing in the morning. Our property transfer with the town was on the consent agenda. It was approved with no questions. And so that is finalized. The town is now an landlord. So we do need to start moving and working on our cap to make that property. I want to inform the board that I'm currently in the middle of performance evaluation reviews with department heads. And so about halfway done with that. I'm excited that we're doing that, getting that out of the way so they can then take that to their first-line supervisors. And important for the county, it never been done, and I'm excited that it's getting done. And then I mentioned the JDC issues. We are, as I said, not accepting females at this time. And we're working on a agreement with San Faye County to house our girls. And I also had a meeting yesterday with hospital management and board members for Penanta to continue the discussions about the county having a seat on the board of the health systems. So that is continuing to move forward. I was invited to their finance committee meeting next week and to their full board meeting. Until there is a full board seat for a county member, they said they would continue to offer as much, as much opportunity to see what's going on with the health council board as possible, the health systems board. So I just wanted to inform the board on that. There will be more discussions and we'll give back more details. I'm aware of the details. And that's about all I have to say.
Questions?
Jessica, I'd like to see if we could send someone from the Healthcare Assistance Fund to go to the opioid, Hector's Project Opioid. We both attended in Espanola, but I think it would be beneficial for them. I, you know, or send somebody from staff because I can't make it. You probably can't make it to Las Vegas. But I think somebody needs to be there to report back to us what was discussed in the presentations. I don't know, somebody from law enforcement or maybe just the Healthcare Assistance Fund that could report back. But I'd like to see somebody from staff go to that meeting, if that's possible.
Okay, we'll do our best. We'll try and narrow what's valid to that. And on that note, one more thing I'll mention is we are very close to putting out the RP for the opioid litigation. There was a request of the AG's office to send us our final draft for them to give a quick review. We sent that out yesterday, so we're hoping to hear back real soon, and we'll put that out. McKinney County put theirs out earlier this week, and we were able to lean on that one as well as Bernal County's. Bernal County's is very detailed, and you've got to keep in mind, they have a full staff of people. They have, I think, four or five attorneys on staff. McKinney County's a lot closer to us, so the details they put in theirs were more in line with the needs of our counties. So I think that will benefit us. That should be coming out in the next week or two.
Okay, moving on. Anything else, Commissioner Gallegos?
No, thank you.
Okay, and we're getting down to the next item, 12A. Is any new business to be considered in a future commission meeting? Okay, hearing none, we'll go on to item B. Commissioner's announcements.
Mr. Commissioner?
Yes?
I have, I have that the commission would consider a work study with the village of Questa. We will see upcoming projects that will be possibly affecting the village of Questa and the county as a whole. And maybe the village of Questa and the county sit together, have that conversation before the next EPA meeting in May.
Okay, noted that you, Commissioner, will work on that. Look at, at the time, we work with your staff.
And, Mr. Chairman, I have a request from Councilwoman Evans on when are we going to have a joint meeting? And if we did have a joint meeting, I want to continue the discussion on the old building by the hospital. Do we want it? Do we not want it? What are we going to do with it? In any case, I think we need it for something. We could put a small RTC for children. We could, we do a lot of things related to behavioral health with that building. And if we would really like the town to give it to us, at least mine, I would like that for us to move forward on those BH initiatives.
Both in forward, both requested, and we're fast getting there.
Okay, Commissioner's announcements. The only thing I have is a follow-up for Melissa Larson's request to use. We're still working on that, correct?
Yes, I reached out to the warden and our emergency manager. We do have concerns. This is a public parking lot, and it's also the ultimate staging area if there is a disaster in our county. And so those are some of our concerns. The warden is certainly concerned about access to his jail. So the same concerns we had a year ago, the same concerns we have now. I do need to follow up with both of them to see if we can get something in writing to forward that on to Melissa.
And I think she's being very accommodating in where she's wanting to be in it. In the smaller areas, she's downsizing things and just on the first trial run. So just keep those in consideration. But, but I'll just go ahead and report back that we're still working on it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Commissioner, Vice Chair, Mayor, Gallegos. If you need a second.
Just get a second, thank you.
Either that or we'll be here to...
Ah, can you hear me?
Yeah. Okay, our motion in a second to adjourn. Third caller.
Thank you.
Just, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you all.